Opening statement, a roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Braw Patel.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
Ms. Peng.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel. Ms. Patel. Mr. Lugo.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Opening statement, Mr. Toth.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Meetings Act, public law 1975, C-231 sunshine law, copies of this public meeting notice were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 3rd, 2024. Members of the public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws of the board and applicable state regulations.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to our first Board of Education Action Meeting of 2024. I am honored to extend a warm greeting to the entire community on behalf of Edison Township Public Schools Board of Education. The Board's commitment to providing an exceptional education remains unwavering, and we are dedicated to supporting our administrative team in their dedication to fostering an environment that nurtures the growth and development of every single student. This evening, our superintendent, Dr. Eldarelli, whom I call a rock star, will share our district's progress towards achieving our 2023-2024 district goals as we focus on continual improvement, including information about our strategic planning process, the Vision 2030. I encourage all the members of our community to attend our community forum here at Edison High School on Monday evening, January 29th, at 6:00, and to actively participate in our strategic planning survey. In the coming months, the district will keep you apprised of the many initiatives and many projects that are lined up to enhance the overall learning experience of our students. Our Board of Education and our administration are committed to working collaboratively and encourage open communication. We value the community input a lot as we work together to shape the future of our Edison Township Public Schools. So without any further delay, I will ask Dr. Eldarelli to share our mission.
Good evening. Good evening. You can do better than that. Good evening. How are you, ladies and gentlemen? My name is Eddie Eldarelli. I am the proud superintendent of the Edison Township Public Schools, and I'm actually really excited to present this evening, too. I knew I was going to have a captured audience tonight on one of my favorite nights of the year, student recognition, and I thought, what better way to kind of recognize and talk a little bit about the progress that our district has made in relationship to our board and district goals. So just a little bit about the process over the course of the summer. Many of the individuals that were on this stage right here, as well as previous board members, got together on a retreat, and we identified areas of strength and areas for growth, some of the things that we want to accomplish within the short term of a calendar year. And they created really, really great overarching goals and then tasked me with the opportunity to create measurable succinct goals that were part of the tenants of what they believed the future of Edison Township should be. So tonight, it's my privilege to report out on those. And as you kind of listen to all of the things that we are doing and continue to do, keep in mind that it is all driven and focused by what we do here as educators in Edison Township. First and foremost is student achievement, the process of teacher teaching and learning, staff and student efficacy, mental health and well-being, and being fiscally responsible to the members of this audience and to the people that are on the stage behind me. So to begin with, we have, you know, a pretty robust agenda. I promise that I am not going to take a long period of time with these, but just kind of hit the highlights and really focus on some of the really great work that we're doing here. So our first goal is in relationship to community and establishing really a community engagement platform. And we wanted to enhance community engagement through strategic communications, which really included our messaging through social media as well as on our district website. And these are some of the things that we've done. And we're going to make this available online as well, too. But I really wanted to hit some of the highlights piece. If you've navigated our website, I think one of the things that I first realized when I got here, that it really isn't that easy to use. It's not really user-friendly. So we have a communications director and a team here that's working on making sure that we're streamlining the navigation process so that it's easy to use, that when you want to find information, it's a few clicks away. We did kind of like an audit of what we thought was really good about the website and what we wanted to get rid of, and we're in the process of migrating that content over. We're looking to do a soft launch of this in concert with an app as well, too, that's going to be customized to the information that you want. So if you want information, if you attend Woodrow Wilson or Benjamin Franklin, and you want to know what the lunch schedule is, you want to have that easily pop up on your app, those are some of the things that we want to make readily available for you. If you want to, you know, have access to the parent portal and things along those lines, we want to make sure that all of the information that we're giving is easily accessible. And the other piece, too, is we want to highlight the good things that we're doing here. We want to make sure that this is an information platform for all of the wonderful projects that we have, for all of the accolades for our student achievement, for any curriculum changes, for any messaging that we want to go out. Or in the event that there's two school closings in one week, right? Which is superintendent's nightmare. The other two pieces that we wanted to highlight really quickly, too, is our new social media. We have a Facebook page. We have an Instagram page. We are constantly getting new users each and every single day. I encourage you to interact with these faces at your leisure. And I think one of the pieces that we're really proud about is the infancy and the development of what we call our parent university, the opportunity for educators and parents to partner together. We've got a really great theme this year. It is Learn, Live, and Lead Well. Our first session, which we had in the fall of '23, met with really, really great success. We're looking for a large level of participation at Live Well, which is coming up at February 28th, 6:00 p.m. at Menlo Park Elementary School. We've got information that's linked on our website to this. And we're looking forward for opportunities to partner with the community and really share what we do in education. So that's goal number one. Goal number two is a little less exciting, but part of the operations of building schools, and that's really the accountability that my administration is kind of held for. And this is what's called our Q-SAC. It's the Single Accountability Continuum Process. And basically, this is a process in which the state ensures that I am stewarding the operations of the school district correctly, and it meets the following criteria. Within the instruction program, the instruction and the curricular program, which is led by both of our chief academic officers, ensuring compliance with fiscal accountability through Mr. Toth's office, our business administrator. Governance falls under myself, as well as the Board of Education in their creation and the adoption of policies. And operations and personnel really kind of fold hand in hand just to make sure that we're in compliance with certifications, the hiring of staff, and making sure that all of the reporting that we do to the state for student assessments and any other major components of data are recorded correctly. And our Q-SAC review is coming up in 2024. We meet constantly with members of the organization, our leadership team at Central Office. I meet individually with them to make sure that we are on point with all of these pieces, and we're confident that our score is going to be one of the highest in the county. Our third goal is probably one of the ones that I knew when I first got in, was something that we needed to tackle as an organization, and that's develop a long-term strategic plan. Something that we can focus on as a community, right? As an organization that we can turn to to talk about why we're doing things in our district. And it focuses on many tenants of what we believe as educators and what we understand as stakeholders and community members. We focus on student wellness. We focus on student achievement. We focus on facilities, wellness, providing accountability and fiscal responsibility. So we embarked on this process in order to develop a five-to-six-year strategic plan. We're actually calling it, you know, Vision 2030 because Vision 29, it actually didn't sound that good, so we're extending it a little bit. Vision 2030 sounds much better. We were able to put a really nice logo along with that as well, too. But we started this process in early '23 with the procurement of some consultants that do this for a living, that assist us in guiding that process. And one of the things that I wanted to make sure of as a leader is that I heard from all stakeholders. Everybody, I want to hear everybody's voice. What do we do really, really well here in Edison? And what can we approve upon? And then based on that information, what type of goals should we be setting? And then what action steps after those should we implement over the course of this time? This document's going to be fluid, but I wanted to make sure that all voices were heard in this process. And I continue to want to hear this unfettered, and whether it is, you know, whether it's complimentary or areas that, you know, I need and our organization needs extreme growth in. That's the only way that we get better. We have a survey development in the launch, which was developed in December. We had all stakeholders take part in that. If you are in this audience and you have not taken that survey, I encourage you to please go ahead and do so. We want to hear what you have to say. I want to hear what students have to say as well, too. Tomorrow, you're going to be getting a letter from me, our high school students, talking a little bit about the survey process and your options to take this survey. I encourage all students and parents, if you're comfortable with your voice. It's the same ones that moms and dads are getting, as well as the staff. So I encourage you to participate in that. And then once we get all of that information based on the survey data and some of the focus groups that we have, we analyze it. We look at what are some of the common trends. We look at areas of focus. Does it meet with what our perception was of our organization? And then create an advisory committee and a foundation to formulate overarching plans, develop an action plan. And my goal, and I know we're moving pretty fast, but is to finalize this piece in June of 2024 so that in September of '24, I can present to this community a five-year term or a six-year term that plans the future of Edison Township Public Schools with your feedback. We have an information session here. If you have not participated in any of the Zooms, we have an in-person session. It is in this room. It's on the 29th, which I think is Monday, is Monday, the 29th, at 6:00 p.m. I'm going to kick it off, and then I'm leaving. So please feel free to say whatever you want and voice what you think is great or the areas of concern or improvement and what we can get better at. We encourage everybody in this room to participate. One of the things that Dr. Tuie currently is championing right now, it's a very large undertaking and something that we can hang our hat on. We are in the process of applying for and undertaking a grant that's going to offer universal pre-K program to all eligible students in Edison Township. This has been a process that has started last year, the middle of last year. We have rolled it out. Dr. Tuie and his team have done an unbelievable job in sticking to timelines. The grant is rigorous and has specific thresholds as well as criteria to meet. But here are just some of the highlights that I'd like to talk about. We've established an enrollment and a criteria process for eligibility, which is in line with the grant protocols. There is a tiered lottery system. We have established a communications campaign. And one of the things I think we can pride ourselves on is we're partnering with local preschools in the community to expand the scope, to offer to more students within the first few years of the development. And I believe this is a five-year protocol. We have to capture all members of what's called the universe, and that's all eligible students within the five-year term. And correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Tuie, '28, '29 is the timeframe for rollout, all right? I got the thumbs up, so we should be good. Any information that you would like about this, we can locate also on our district website. We have a website that is donated directly to this. It's called the PEA Initiative. And these steps are ever-evolving. And there's a lot more information on the website than we're highlighting here. But I do want to keep my presentation a little bit shorter. And then the last part of this is obviously, you know, really the foundation of this, right? And that's providing the funding for all of these pieces and creating a budget that is fiscally responsible with the least minimal impact to the taxpayers and to the members of this community. The budget process does not start in January of '24. Mr. Toth and the business office, they start this process in September. They have budget kickoff meetings with all budgeting managers, supervisors, principals. They get input from each department head. They developed and streamlined this process. They automated it so that staff have easy access to not only their budget and their budget numbers, but can also justify those pieces, whether it's new textbooks, or materials, or learning components, or digital software. Then we established deadlines. The board actually adopted a budget calendar in which we're hitting all of those deadlines. We are conducting budget reviews over the course of the next couple of months. And then prior to its public hearing in April, we will review the budget in March, right after we hear the governor's budget address, which happens in March of 2024. Just some additional highlights that are not related to goals, things I think that we're proud of, that I just, I kind of want to brag about, if that's okay? We have a really awesome dual-language program over at Washington Elementary School. It's met with great success. Our chief academic officer, as well as our supervisor for this program and the building-level leadership are doing an unbelievable job with rolling out. Really excited about this in kindergarten. Dr. Tuie and Ms. Quick are spearheading our Edison Success Academy, which targets our most at-risk students in order to make them successful and keep them on a path of success. In a few moments, you're going to hear a little bit about on-demand tutoring. We have it both, we have high-dose tutoring both at the elementary and the high school level, and it's universal in a little bit. I won't steal Mr. Cohen's thunder. We are committed to student and staff wellness, you know, through school counseling, providing services for staff as well, too, but especially for our children to ensure that their mental health needs are being met. And if you've watched any of the board meetings over the course of the last year, you'll know that we are committed to addressing our overcrowding issue and facility enhancements. That's something that previous boards, prior to my time here in Edison Township, have focused on, and I'm here to steward that vision. So in closing, I hope that was enough, and I think it was like 11 minutes, and I told them that it would be nine, but it was a little bit more than that. But I do want to say, I can't thank you enough for your continued support. I implore you to be a part of this process and the strategic planning process. I welcome it. And two more highlights. Part of the reason why we do all of these things that we've just discussed is for the greatest night of the year, and that's student recognition. We do it tonight, and we do it in June. And I would be remiss if I did not thank the members of the Board of Education, these volunteers who donate their time each and every single day. They only acknowledge one month as Board Recognition Month. That is today. They have certificates recognizing that. But I do think that they deserve accolades for all the work that they've done, as well as the support that they've shown for me, my team, this administration, and the students and staff here of Edison Township. So without any further hesitation, hopefully that presentation was good enough to criticize a little bit later on this evening. You'll laugh at that later on. I know some of the kids in the front were joking about that. But I appreciate your time, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, our superintendent rock star, Dr. Eldarelli. This was awesome. And we once again strongly encourage everyone to attend next Monday, January 29th, 6:00 p.m., here, Edison High School, the session. Please do so. With that being said, there is another wonderful initiative that some of you might have already heard of, had seen emails or social media posts. This is truly a game changer and a step in the right direction to help our students to the full extent. Let's hear from our chief academic officer, Mr. Rick Cohen.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity to present myself real quick. So yes, my name is Rick Cohen. I'm the newish chief academic officer for secondary education. I haven't had a chance to meet many of you yet, but I appreciate the opportunity to present. Typically, when I present, I stand at the podium. I've done probably 100 board presentations in my career, but watching Dr. Relly speak out in front, walking around, so much more effective, so I figured I would follow suit. Literally following suit. We're wearing the same exact suit, I think. So it's a pleasure to talk to you about something we're really excited about here. We think it's a big game changer for what we can do and how we can best serve all of our Edison students. And it has to do with what we're talking about, it's on-demand chat tutoring. So but real first, where we currently are when it comes to tutoring, Edison's doing an incredible job in terms of providing tutoring to its students currently. When it comes to in-person tutoring, which is the Rolls-Royce of tutoring, that it's in-person. That's the best model. We do an extensive amount in Edison between using Title I funds to provide in-person tutoring for our eligible students. And with the great work of Ms. Banina Goomer and Maria Lopez and the district doing some grant writing, brought in over $400,000 for in-person tutoring for our second through fifth graders. It's going to run us through the year and into the summer. And it's just, we couldn't give even more if we even tried. In order to give more, we've also then brought on high-doses virtual tutoring. That is for, right now, we're piloting that in Edison High for our Title I math students. And there was an article today published in NorthJersey.com that talks about how this is a new wave, so to speak, in order to provide extensive tutoring that goes above and beyond. And Edison is featured in that article as being sort of ahead of the game and on the cutting edge in terms of doing all they can to provide as much tutoring, which has proven to be highly effective for students. And then, of course, there is private tutoring that goes on. We never want for parents to have to dig into their pockets to support their students, but we realize that does happen, and, you know, it can be a great tool for students. And despite all the great work and efforts on the entire community's part and the district's part to provide tutoring, there are some challenges when it comes to in-person tutoring. Staffing is a challenge. You know, staff have kids to go home to them, or maybe they're taking graduate courses, so they don't always have the availability. And teaching is difficult. It's hard and stressful. It takes a lot of energy, so to have the strength and energy to then pour out more work, whether it's the end of the day or before school, to tutor kids, takes an incredible amount of energy and dedication. So our tutors that are out there doing that, they're superheroes. But they also have their scheduling limitations. Those that can tutor can't do it every day. So the tutoring has to be offered according to the staffing schedule, which doesn't always match our students' schedules. We have students that like to do a whole world of extracurricular activities or can't make it to school before school. So there are limitations there as well. And then, of course, there's an expense to the tutoring services that we do provide, and there aren't unlimited funds. When it comes to high-dosis virtual tutoring, we realize there are challenges for engaging all students that are eligible online at high doses, right? There are limitations there as well. And then finally, if it's private tutoring, it can be really expensive. So the game changer is on-demand chat tutoring. And I'm going to talk about the reasons why we think it's a game changer. But I do want to clarify one thing real quick. When we talk about chat tutoring, don't imagine your child on a phone, or kids don't imagine themselves on your phone just chatting, all right? Or texting, all right? What it is, is full screen on a device where you're chatting, conversation, questions that you have, your needs. And there's also a whiteboard where you can be interactive. You can post your homework assignments onto the platform, and the tutor, who's a live person, who's an experienced vetted tutor, can see your assignments, your work, and help you through it, right? And they're not giving answers. They're trained as tutors. Now, the advantages, and why we call it a game changer, is that it takes away all the challenges that providing tutoring has presented. First and foremost, this is free. Through a unique relationship we have with Varsity Tutor, our partnership, they are offering free tutoring for all students, kid at 12, and all of Edison. That leaves no staff limitations. They have over 40,000 vetted tutors. This is in all core academic subjects, including the high school level like chemistry and biology and physics. There is no scheduling required. It's 24/7, on-demand, instantaneous. So he doesn't need to be scheduled. You can stay on as long as you need. They're not time sessions. Or if you just have a quick question here or there, you can get it in that second and then be able to continue to move on. And then it's a stress reliever. You know, I can say as a parent, having kids going through middle school and high school, sometimes they have subjects that are challenging. I can't help my kids with anything having to do with algebra, right? And so it's stressful for me as a parent. Now I know my kids, if they went to Edison schools, could get that help, right? And for you, if you're a student and you have that test coming up on Monday, and it's Sunday, and you don't have everything clear, now you can get that support you need and feel that you can be prepared or do as well as you can on your homework. So the way in which to access it, it's already there and accessible. You can get it right now. Students, it's in your Class Link. You go right to Class Link. You look for the Varsity Tutors icon. You click on it, and it is super easy to access. You just click on on-demand tutoring, and your tutor will be there. You pick the subject, you pick the grade, and you pick whether you want it English or Spanish, and they'll be there within seconds. There's a lot of information about Varsity Tutors and how they go about getting their tutors, but they do, they look for subject matter expertise. They want people that have previous tutoring experiences. They make them do demos and show their efficacy before hiring them, and they make sure they're meeting district standards. And then, of course, safety is most important when it comes. Everything is recorded and can be accessed at any time by a parent or district if needed. There's a lot of other tools that are on the Varsity Tutors platform that are also free. They're excellent tools. Of course, our highlight that we're talking about right now is the Chat 24/7 tutoring. But I'm going to show you a very quick, but really effective video from Varsity Tutors on the other, on all the different offerings on their platform.
Welcome to Varsity Tutors for Schools, the leader in live, online learning. Varsity Tutors for Schools gives you 24/7 access to a collection of powerful learning tools and resources designed to support your learning goals. Connect with an experienced tutor at any time with 24/7 on-demand chat tutoring for immediate academic help. Elevate writing skills to new heights with on-demand essay review and coaching, ideal for crafting outstanding essays, especially for college applications. Choose from hundreds of live group classes each week where students get expert instruction and collaborate with their peers. Elevate academics and dive deeper with course-specific content. Prepare for higher education with test prep and admissions classes as part of our college and career readiness offering. Cultivate curiosity through enrichment classes covering topics from coding to game design and beyond. Learn from the icons with celebrity-led STAR courses and take a STAR-studded journey through captivating subjects. Varsity Tutors for Schools personalizes learning for every student and creates a roadmap for their success. Practice tests help identify strengths and areas for improvement. Those test results help define a personal learning plan. Self-study and practice problems then provide the support needed to master specific skills and foster success. Unlock unlimited access to a world of knowledge and personalized learning today. Access the platform through your school portal and click on the Varsity Tutors icon. Your child's academic success starts here at Varsity Tutors for Schools.
So one of the words you heard of a couple of times there is "personal." And so now, like, personalization of education is like the holy grail of education. If you can get personalized and individualized, meeting people at their needs, giving them the support that they need, it seemed unreachable and unattainable. But now, we believe with this resource, we can get personalized education through what we offer as a school district, as well as now with this platform, in addition to everything else that we offer. All those things you saw on there, all free, all on the platform. You just go onto Class Link, Varsity Tutors, and it's really user-friendly. But there are also, we've sent out by email yesterday some how-to videos. If you want, you can go to your email and then see the how-to videos on how to access these things. And we're also going to do a parent information session on January 30th, Zoom, by Zoom, at 6:30 p.m. I'll be there. Varsity Tutors will also be there. We'll show you more, and we'll take all your questions or anything you have. We really want everybody to be able to access this and maximize this as a tool to help, you know, increase the success even further. With all that, thank you very much, and have a grateful evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cohen. That was a very informative presentation, and I'm pretty sure all the students will benefit significantly from that. And once again, we encourage all of you to attend that virtual session on Tuesday, January 30th. Back-to-back sessions, but it's all very informative and helps the district. So thank you so much. Now, while we are at the subject of implementing new ideas, programs, and solutions, here is something that came from our parent is something that came from our parent community, from many parents. From a long time, the parent community has been struggling navigating the website or looking for information or have the information handy. We can't have it all fixed in one day. But Dr. Eldar Ely and his wonderful team, including our communications director, Mrs. Heather Daniel, did a great job and has put together a nice one-page document, or link, I would say, which the teams are still working on before it gets all finalized. Uh, but I just wanted to share a quick preview of that, what it looks like. Once it's finalized, it will be available for the parent community, handy on the website whenever they need. And we are hoping that it will be very beneficial and save time for several parents and students. And we look forward seeking more information on how we can improvise upon this, how we can, what all we can do with this. So, just to do a quick overview, it has all the information as you can see on the screen. Um, most of the links are handy. So it will be a one place where you can go in, like a, on a, on the mid of the week, someone is looking for a test ticket, or looking for some information on board meetings, or information on Varsity Tutors, or anything else. It will be a one, it will be all at one place. And we can just make this better and better from here. So we are seeking community input, and in coming weeks, uh, we'll send out communications. So the more input we get, we will just start getting, making this better and better. That's, that's all. I'm not going to make you guys wait any longer, so I'll jump right into it. Sorry to, I apologize myself and on behalf of Dr. Eldar Ely as well for making you guys wait so long. So, as I have said many times in the past, uh, student recognition is one of my favorite meetings, along with the staff recognition. And we have an amazing graduation ceremony in the June. That's another favorite part of being a board of a member. Uh, we are proud of everything you guys do. This is all for you and your achievements here. I can go all night long and praise, keep singing praises of everything that you do, um, but also for those students who are not being recognized today. You also, all of you also make us feel very proud. Coach Vince Lombardi once said, "The difference between a successful person and others is not a lack of strength, not the lack of knowledge, but rather a lack in will." So please keep faith for all those who are not recognized. Work hard. I know you all do work hard. And I have full confidence in all of you that you will all do a great job, and very soon, you all will be recognized. But for now, all of you here, and those who could not make it here, everyone who is on the list, you guys worked very hard, and you have earned this. This is your moment. So we must recognize you wholeheartedly. So without any further delay, I will ask our music and visual arts supervisor, Thomas White, to start the wonderful student recognition. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tom White. I'm supervisor of visual and performing arts, and I'd like to welcome you to student recognition night. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Eldar Ely, the Board of Education, and everyone at Central Office who helped put this together. A lot of work goes into this, and, and a lot of people behind the scenes make this a success. Uh, we're here tonight to celebrate our students' successes in so many different arenas: academic, athletic, artistic, music, FCC, FCC LA, FBLA, any letter combination you want to put together, we got it. But the only things that we request tonight is that you please just stay to the end of the program. There's going to be a brief intermission in between where you're going to be able to leave before the rest of the board meeting. And also, please stand by your seat when your name is called for recognition. Start our night off, I'd like to introduce Dr. Joan Valentine, principal of John Adams Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Eldar Ely, and thank you to the Board of Education for providing us with this wonderful opportunity. And thank you to the Board of Education for your recognition tonight. I hope that you'll have your salaries doubled because you deserve that. So thank you for your efforts as well. I'd like to start by recognizing the 2023 Jamazing GMC Middle School Girls Varsity Cross Country Champions under the advisor coach, Mr. Doug Pissaro. Congratulations to the following students: Anika Gina, Avika Solanki, Isabel Durek, Arya Sinha, Dia Setel, Anika Anand, Anika Kalkarni, Adia Patel, Trisha Oja, Savannah Kecho, Neisha Mishra, Anusha Santill, Anaya Maniar, Mitra Ramji, Rishika Gupta, Sahisha Joshi, Sanvi Perik, Sanakshi Roy Chodri, Diethi Mohan, Lea Gabanathan, and Yajin Hr. Congratulations to those champions. A special congratulations to FCC LA Fall Leadership Conference under the advisement of Ms. Sue Seago. Congratulations to the following students: first-place gold medal with a perfect score, Yuvari Baid, Sinjani Chandra; first-place gold medal, what's the buzz, Anvita Singal, Jia Bagachi, Siana Deb, Anya Shetty, Arya Ja, Nihya Pa Chang Ma; second-place gold medal, Kyra Jaharjijar, Kushi Maitoni. More FCC LA accolades: gold medal, Aparna Rani and Aditya Rani; first-place silver, Ria Rana, Ashita Aurora, Evelyn Fu, Servin Bhutani, Ariyan Mittal, and Tiirth Shah. Congratulations to all of our winners. Moving right along, also FCC LA Fall Leadership Conference silver medal, Siddiksha Sonani, Janet Howe, Heli Joshi, Jia Ashar, Alia Varma, Sanvi Shetty, Rav Brambat, Kilin Perik, and Soham Guladi. Congratulations to all of our Jamazing students who are being recognized tonight. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Woodrow Wilson Principal, Blevins.
Good evening. With great pride and excitement, I present the BOE Student Recognition for Woodrow Wilson Middle School. First, I am delighted to recognize the Woodrow Wilson Middle School Girls Volleyball Team, woo, achieving the historic milestone of becoming the first-ever Edison Volleyball Tournament Champions. Congratulations, girls! Coached by Ms. Catano, tonight we recognize Sanvi Vashek, Levanya Bahal, Alina Bannerjee, Olivia Chow, Shreya Desai, Swathi Donna Sikar, Havisha Gangula, Swara Joshi, Catalina Jung, Akruthi Kadamenen, Sophia Marquez, Kamaya Naik, Anuksha Patel, Kavya Patel, Sa Prudvi, Ardi Rao, Akshaya Santosh Kumar, Haley Chow, Akshana Sharma, Tanisha Sharma, Evelyn Thomas, Driti Vora, Caitlin Yam, and Driti Patel. Congratulations. Tonight, we also have the privilege of recognizing a co-curricular team that embodies the true spirit of collaboration and unity. For what I believe is another first for our Edison Middle Schools, this winning team is comprised of students from three of our schools: Woodrow Wilson, John Adams, and Thomas Jefferson. So on behalf of Dr. Valentine, Ms. Emden, and myself, I am honored to recognize the Go IT Team that took first place at the New York City Marathon App Challenge sponsored by TCS. And tonight, we also found out that this team qualified for the TCS Global. They are one out of six teams, one of six out of 931 teams that qualified. So congratulations. This combined middle school team, under the guidance of Mr. John Peach from John Adams Middle School, truly exemplifies "We are One Edison." So, without further ado, our students, two from Woodrow Wilson Middle School, Vishnu Chidali, Purnav Venka Taraman; from Thomas Jefferson Middle School, Sanvika Govindaraj; and from John Adams Middle School, Isha Rana. Congratulations to all the students recognized tonight. And now I have the distinct honor of introducing the principal from the home of the Eagles, Mr. Charles Ross.
Thank you, Ms. Blevins. Always great to be preceded by an Eagle, once an Eagle, always an Eagle. I want to thank Dr. Eldar Ely, the Board of Education, the student representatives, all the people in attendance for the opportunity, one, to be the principal, but also for the opportunity to shine and let everybody know just what's great about Edison High School. Now, we've got a lot of names, but we're kind of operating with a skeleton crew tonight because it's also senior night for basketball and cheer. And cheer just got back from Dallas, and basketball just got back from beating JP last night. So, we'll start off, however, for Coach Kalen Morelli in girls soccer, let's give it up for all Red Division, Jelcy Go, who's on the court and, right now, and Isabella Charles. And all Red Division and all GMC, only a junior, Kaden Arivena. Moving on to the world of tennis, under Coach Wes Smith, we have all Red Division, Kalia Ravon and Nandani Chandra. And Nandani Chandra, also all GMC, who for the first time ever won the second singles flight in the GMC tournament. We're so proud of her. Nandani. Now, moving on to uh, boys soccer, under Coach Steve Rubin. I know he's out here in the back. All-white division, another young and upcoming star, Mr. Emmanuel Costas. Great job with the red and gold there. Alright, and my cheer, as I said, is over in the, in the Frank Cangelosi Gymnasium behind us, cheering our varsity basketball on. They were the Red Division GMC Game Day Champions, and they are back-to-back-to-back-to-back state champs coming into this year. So we know it's going to be a great spring for Coach Nicole Gregoire and Coach Sarah Yokum. We have Tierra Campbell, Gianna Rafino, Olivia Short, Lexie Tango, Lindsay Yasco, Avery Abrams, Elise Bullock, Kylie Ewing, Alyssa Rogers, Lila Dixon, Kamora Green, Makiah Rooks, Samantha Villa, Melody Lewis, Talia Smith, Vanessa Jankowski, Casey Lafer, Sienna Dixon, and John Prisgoda as our mascot. Alright, moving on to Coach Matt Yasco with football. First-team All-County would be Ricky Harvey and Seabass Sebastian Vera. And moving down, first-team All-Division Big Central Conference National Silver, we had Ricky Harvey, Seabass, and Justin Jay Reid. Second-team All-Division in the Big Central Conference, we had Matt Paz Pazimo, Torian Ratray, and Sean Garland. In, under Coach Jason Wernland in girls volleyball, we had all-white division, Kyla Davis and Arighe Ashraf. And as we continue getting state champs in the world of gymnastics, our own Emily Harikee was first-team GMC Beam and also NJSIAA State Champ for the Beam in gymnastics. Great job, Emily. Under Coach Megan Reeves and Danielle Heath, always to thank Mr. Jordan Laird from JP Stevens, the fantastic FCC LA, the Fall Leadership Conference. Great to see the middle schools building those up, sending future Eagles and Hawks here to work. But we've got first-place gold that ended up getting a perfect score in the Battle of the Budget was Diddy Bumpali and Pragya Batia. Now, I've got almost a page of awards for the FCC LA, so I'm going to go through them a little bit quickly. But we've got first-place gold, Gauri Chandrasan, Rishan Kunadaraju. Second-place gold, Rudra Patel, Jenny Lee Ciprian, Ashlyn Gordon, and Stuti Shah. Third-place gold, Haley Klatchevsky, Anata Wadhha, Ikira Kasada, Mohammed Hadi, Reina Patel, Neville Ozin, Mahdi Jamal Mohammed, Kalen Savedra Lopez. And silver medals, we have Naval Ozin, Yashwari, Chaima Varapu, Sai Godanti, Savesh Prem Kumar, Karish McCowley, and Priscilla Samuel. And now, I talk about how, you know, the Edison High never closes, and I have to get this group out of here quick because their coaches are waiting to keep practicing them. You're not back-to-back state champs for a long time. But our US band, I need everybody to stand up from our marching band, our US bands, Group Four Open New Jersey State Champs and NJMBDA, NJ State Champs, Class AAA from Martina Cola and Derek Dillman. One, two, three, four, band ten, hut! Coach Bravo, you're going to have to work it. Let's try it again. One, two, three, four, band ten, hut! Yeah! That's a more back-to-back state champs. Thank you guys so much. You got to sit down and wait for the JP announcements, though. Don't leave yet, Coach. Alright, all Central Jersey Wind Ensemble, continuing with the arts, we've got Akshay Kotri, Jonathan Lee, and Dev Dwalde. All Central Jersey Symphonic Band, Ramulo Tabon Ramirez, Hannah Chung, and Augustia Chinchenkar. Our man in the percussion, the people, all Central Jersey in the ensemble, Albert Abadigladi. Very proud now in our academic awards. It's always great to have a fantastic rival like JP to try to strive for their great academic achievements, and we've done well this year with four National Merit Scholarship semifinalists: Augustia Caligarla, Atharva Namimendar, Achit Devedi, Shuthant Balaraman. And our governor STEM scholar, Zeishan Dhakim Sheikh. So congratulations to all the people from Edison High. And now I want to bring up from our sister school, JP Stevens, soon-to-be Dr. Ojas Ray.
Thank you, everyone, for sticking around. I'm going to get started very quickly. Uh, the first award goes to All-Red Division Sportsmanship Award for the girls tennis team coached by Coach Kozinski, Narasar Wuta, Nikita Kandawarkar, Riva Kokar, Lippi Patel, Niva Sule, Harika Premasaru, Neha Shil, Sophie Soon, Arushi Chapati, Sia Desmuk, Disha Verma, Aditi Radraman. The first, first-team United Silver Division Football by Coach George, Haven Biffett and Marquis Webb. First-team All-Red Division Volleyball by Coach Weber, Delora Pack. All-Conference Cross-Country Track, first-team All-Red Division Coach Azar Grace Best, Abraham Talpran Ghar. First-team Red Division Cross-Country Track, Tanvi Amaraju. First-team Red Division Cross-Country Track, Zeal Shah. First-team, first-team All-White Division for Boys Soccer coached by Coach McMullin, Alexki Sergiev, and Tanish Chatan. First-team Red Division Girls Soccer coached by Coach Jazwaldo, Cassidy Jazwaldo. First-team All-Red Division Girls Tennis, Neha Sarwuta. The next award goes for CGMEA Regions Orchestra by um, Dr. Verdi and Mr. Lee, Neha Tota, Spandan Chandra, Vidut Rajagopal, Andrew Ikamoto, Joel One, Avi Patel, Howard Zu, and Pooja Ramakrishnan. For CGMEA Regions High School Treble Chorus, Advikya Anan, Apurva Chandari, Saro De, Kushi Dengale, Gorika Diman, Kinjo Gadil, Ananya Gunda, Merup Kor, Imani Kandar, Arika Kilson, Sai Lahari, Angura Nagesh, Herika Vedula. For Mixed Chorus, Varsha Afkur, Manat Anan, Shimon Arji, Tanishi Arthara, Shilip Patirupula, Riva Davay, Arna Daria, Kritish Jain, Abhirishi Kartik Ayager, Charzmir Kumar, Druv Mirachandi, Maruti Nuppali, Victor Agulmenti, Aditya Perik, Adijra Paul, Druv Mirchandi, Maruti Nuppali, Victor Agulmenti, Aditya Parek, Adijra Paul, Ramya Rapasana, Magna Ravichandran, Vidi Santoshi, Vedika Shirivasan. For ACDA All-Easter Middle School and Junior High Honors Choir, Sai Halahari, Tanishi Astana, Sanvi Chorukar, Arna Daria, Amy Han, Imani Kandarki, Sophia Matthew, Druv Mirchandani, and Sanvi Shah. And we have a whole list of FCC LA awards for the Fall Leadership Conference. First-place gold, Vishkar Shrinivasan, Malav Shah, Gori Vedya, Hiral Zavaidya, Ronak Sadargandi, Shridar Garg, Om Shingal, Tanvi Prabudesai, Melissa Romero, Hita Shrinivasan, Estella Tang, Anjali Sina, Leah Papupalti, Sally Brennan, Sanvi Kokarni, Druvi Patel, Sanya Tolvar, Kritika Manwani, and Ananya Batla. For second-place gold, Sia Patel, Sarah Bandari, Anika Sandeep, Aparna Nar, Malav Shah. And for third-place gold, Emma Desa, Ria Kotrifwaran. For first-place silver, Minal Ranjan, Arigi Paul. For second-place silver, Sri Varshita Kara, Pranika Kolaru, Sanvi Bhatapalantari. Also for second-place silver, Mehak Patel, Yashvi Patel, Arshna Agarwal, Dursana Chakrabarti, Janani Kangaraja, Nitia Alapur, Manish Gupta, Varun Venin, Avinash Kandula, Barke Ilmas, and Manav Chitareti. For third-place silver, Kea Patel. We're also proud to have the 2023 National Leadership Conference. Amanda Chen was elected National President for the FCC LA. For the second-place Knowledge Bowl, Manav Chitareti, Kritika Manwani, Barke Ilmas, Ananya Batla, and Minal Ranjan. For the National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, Mita Talawan Babu, Vincent Cow, Brendan Junjun, Sumit Gotkar, Nishya Reddy, Gutika Kondor, Alba Kandalar, Arushi Kalu, Sardhu Krishna Kumar, Pranayana Mugiranen, Isha Patel, Dylan Vikas Prithiani, Vidut Rajagopal, Arnav Sandhi, Arnag Niraj Shet, Shiviranjan, Vella Murjun, Andy Zu, Emma Zhang, and Jerome Zhang. And lastly, to close out, the Girl Scouts of the USA Silver Award, Highest Girl Scout Recognition goes to Kushy Hebar. And with that, I'd like to hand over back to Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. How about one more big, rousing round of applause for all of our students? And this concludes our Student Recognition Night. I'd like to, at this time, kick it back to our Board of Education President, Mr. Bureau Patel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White, and thank you all the students. Great job. And we'll give everyone a few minutes to, if you want to go home, do the homework. So, we'll take a pause here. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Before we start our regular meeting, we would like to observe a moment of silence for someone whom the whole community knew, Sergeant Joe Luistro, who recently passed away. So, let's observe a moment of silence for him. Thank you. Now, we'll start our regular meeting, and we'll start with our Student Council Representatives. We'll start with Edison High School, Ms. Charvi Padmanabini, the President of Student Council.
Hello, Board of Education members and the public. My name is Charvi Padmanabini, and I'm the Student Council President and Student Representative from Edison High School. This week, Edison High School was Spirit Week. The days were Maestro Monday, which was to switch outfits to teacher. Tuesday was Tosey Tuesday, which was to wear a comfortable outfit. And Wednesday was Eagle Wednesday, where we encourage students to dress in Eagle merch or red and gold. Thursday is Happy Feet, where we ask students to dress in unique socks or dress as Penguin. And lastly, Friday is Class Colors. We hope students are enjoying the Spirit Week and engaging in the days. January 26th after school is our Battle of Classes event. This is where each class representative will go against each other in the Pin the Tail on the Principal, Zacharys, Hungry Hippos, and more. Both events allow classes to gain points for the final Battle of Class event. Our wrestling team's record is currently eight-four, and we hope they continue to succeed. A few weeks ago, our school competed at DECA's Regional Competition. We had over 60-plus students qualify for states and with numerous placing in first, second, and third place. Edison's track had GMCs, and we had Amma Oatang winning first place for the high jump, beating Edison Women's Record for the past 40 years. Edison High School's cheerleaders also went to Dallas, Texas for the NCAA competition, where they placed sixth in the nation. Our basketball also had a fantastic win against JP Stevens yesterday, winning the City of Lights Trophy. After asking students about school issues, a standard answer we received from seniors was senior law safety. Numerous students expressed how numerous other students were creating parking spots in different areas and making it hard to leave at the end of the day, as well as numerous potholes adding to the unsafety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Padmanabini. Miss Padmanabini, sorry. The next is JP Stevens, Ms. Ruwanthika Sivaprikashini Virasiku. Did I get it right? I have to get it right. Thank you. All yours.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ruwanthika Sivaprikashini Virasiku, and I'm the corresponding Secretary of the Student Council at John P. Stevens High School. Since the last Board of Education meeting here, our school has welcomed our new principal, Mr. Riggy, and our student body has partaken in many events through their co-curricular activities. The dance team performed an amazing piece during our winter pep rally, and we had the cheer team collaborate with teachers at our school to prepare a fun partner dance. This induced an insane amount of school spirit as students got to see their favorite teacher's dance. Additionally, our DECA club has attended its regional conference at Kane University and walked out with 114 state qualifiers, one of the highest qualifier counts in the state. Our council has made significant progress towards our annual Mr. JPS event. We have decided that the event will now be called JPS Royalty, and preparations are currently being made for this event to be held in a manner where we keep the integrity and the heart of the event while also simultaneously making it more inclusive for my fellow peers. We celebrated the holidays through our Holiday Spirit Week, and JP was buzzing with spirit as we were able to witness it on the televisions in the cafeteria. We also have many events coming up for our school. The mock trial team will be attending their first conference. Our Science Olympia team also did an amazing job placing second during their tournament at regionals and working hard for their upcoming state tournament. The current sports season has also been astounding for our school. During, our girls' basketball team has a record of 7-1 within their division, which is one of the best starts in JP history. Our boys' basketball team won their tournament over break. The boys' bowling team has a record of 4-2-1 in their division, and the girls' bowling team has a record of 7-3 overall. The girls' and boys' swim teams have a record of 4-3. The wrestling team and the ice hockey team have a record of 2-8 and 2-6. Other important events that have occurred for our student body include how the past weekend was also all-state auditions for the band students, which many students utilize as a presentation of the culmination of hard work they have been putting into their instrument over the past few months. JP, as a whole, has been participating in numerous events while also fostering school spirit. With that being said, I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ruwanthika. We appreciate both of you coming here and contributing and providing us updates. Thank you so much. Next is Public Comments, Resolutions Only. Ms. Conway?
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. There's only one problem with one of the resolutions on personnel. And if you look at, I'm trying to figure out the page so you can find it, because there was some additions put in. And if you look at Page One of 12, Item Two, for the first person and the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth person, I engage you when it comes time to vote that you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jerry?
So, I'm also going to comment about the personnel agenda. How you vote is your call. So, you know, I saw the agenda today, and I felt I needed to come here. Jeff Bowden, 40 years of service, and Michelle Wenzo, 30 years of service. Also, we have other teachers who are retiring. I just want to pick these two personnel because I had a lot of interactions with them in the past 10 years when I was on board with all these contract negotiations. Actually, I know Jeff, before he became the ETA president, he was my son's teacher at John Adams. And I know, if I remember correctly, he collects sand as his hobby. So, sand, you know, on beach. So, I remember when I was on a trip, you know, my son said, you know, we got to get some sand for Mrs. Bowden, Mr. Bowden, Mr. Bowden. So, okay. So, on one of my first trip, I collected sand. I forgot where it was, and I put it in my suitcase all the way on the bottom. So, when you go to the airport security, of course, they check it out, right? So, they found it out, and I had to explain to them. So, moving forward, the next couple of trips, you know, I just take the bottle and I put it in the, you know, in the bucket. So, we can, you know, save a lot of this effort. Mr. Bowden, we had a lot of interactions with him. You know, I'm on the left side, he's on the teacher's side. And we had a lot of, you know, we're not on the same page on a lot of things, but that's what it's supposed to be, right? We are on different sides. But when it comes to key things, we are together. We're able to compromise, and that is a key. I had two contract negotiations with you guys, especially the latest one, the five-year contract, right? And, you know, we're able to compromise and get somewhere in the middle. And that's what the contract negotiation is supposed to be. But the other thing, we have a lot in common, is we support the good-working, hard-working teachers, right? We award them with contract. And, you know, in the past 10 years, I remembered, I don't remember how many times we have the Donaldson hearings that were reversed. There's only once, four Donaldson hearings, once. And I hope you tell your board, you tell your members who was more present at that time. Okay. So, as I said, we have things different, but we have a lot of things in common. And we support the hard-working teachers. And Michelle, I don't know if you guys know Michelle. She's very good at cooking, making cookies. So, you know, during this negotiation, with a law negotiation, we were expecting for her to get the cookies to us, and her stove broke. And I think that towards the end, we got it once, right? She finally got a brand-new oven. We got it once. And now I see that she's retiring. I guess no more Wenzo cookies anymore. Right? So, you know, that's my comment on the personnel. I also have a comment about the finance resolutions. When I look at the furnitures, we have multiple furniture purchases. If we add them together, it's probably close to half a million dollars. And I know we're going through co-op. They had a pre-negotiated price. And since we're purchasing so many, so much furniture, and I know there are other companies, furniture companies that work with co-ops. And can we just, you know, moving forward, can we get other companies to also give us some quotes on this instead of going to one company? And to me, this is a lot of money. And even for volume-wise, we should get some discount. I don't know if we are getting any discount on this, or we're just going by the standard co-op price on this. So, those are just the comments. If you want to answer it, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next, Resolutions Only. Saying done, Motion to and Public Comments.
Motion.
Mr. Romano?
Second.
Second, Mr. Schneider. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion to Approve Personnel Report.
Motion.
Mr. Romano? Mr. Rivera, second. Roll call, Mr. Doug?
Yes. Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera? Mr. Schneider?
Yes, I will abstain from Number 11 for a known conflict.
Yes, abstain on 11. Noted. Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Pang?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Patel?
Yes, and I vote yes on Mr. Bowden. You'll be in a better place, trust me.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is Motion to Approve Administration, Curriculum, and Instruction Pupil Services Reports.
Motion.
Mr. Schneider?
Second.
Mr. Romano? Roll call?
Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera? Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Pang?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
Mr., President Patel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is Motion to Approve Finance Reports.
Motion.
Mr. Schneider, Mr. Rivera, second. Roll call?
Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera? Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Pang?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Patel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we have a few announcements. The next meeting for February, we will have only one meeting. It's going to be February 27, Tuesday. At 5:30 PM, we will start the closed session, and at 7 PM, we will have the public meeting. Only one meeting next month, February 27, Tuesday, over here at Edison High School. That being said, before we start the Board Member Comments, I would like to pass it on to our rock star, Dr. Alderelli, for the Number 11 that people heard about. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Board President Patel. So, I'm going to keep my comments brief, and obviously, we have a little bit of time to get together, left Mr. Bowden and Ms. Wenzel. But I would be remiss if I did not express, you know, my sincere congratulations on your retirement, and well-deserved. And my thanks to both of you for all that you've done to support the Edison Township Public Schools. You know, since my time here, since I came here in October 2020, you've been extremely welcoming and supportive of my transition, which happened during a very difficult time in the midst of COVID. We have solved problems collaboratively. We have worked and supported initiatives together with both staff and administration. You've been an advocate of the board. You've been an advocate of the board and staff and student achievement. I thank you for all that you've done, and I wish you both well in your future endeavors. And, you know, despite some of the sentiments in the audience, you know, the board did accept your resignation. But we do have a little bit of time to, you know, to get some work done over the course of the next six months. So I know I speak for everybody on this stage as well as the administration. Thank you both for everything that you've done. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Board member comments. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Patel. I basically just have three comments that I want to make. First of all, I want to congratulate all of our award winners and thank our coaches, advisors, and the parents who supported them. I also want to thank Dr. Alderelli. I think it's important, your presentation was very important to the public. I think the public should know what our vision, what direction we want to take to the school district. So I truly appreciate the fact that you went back, revisited our goals, and gave us a status on that. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, I want to say congratulations to our retirees. I got 24 years. I'm following really soon. But we got individuals from 20 years to 40 years of experience. We're going to truly miss that experience. But, you know, thank you for your service. Thank you for what you did in this district, and good luck on your new paths. Truly thankful for you guys.
Thank you. Next, Mrs. White?
I'd just like to add my congratulations to all of our award winners. And I already spoke to Jeff and Michelle, and, you know, they're both very special to me. And when they do retire, I will miss them so much. So, but I do want them, you know, to enjoy their retirement. It's a beautiful thing for both of you. And to Patty Savalich, too. She's retiring as well. So, but good luck to both.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Next, Mr. Schneider?
Congratulations to everybody. I definitely, we have plenty of time, actually, to congratulate you guys on your retirement. I think we'll probably even have some parties to celebrate it.
For sure.
So we'll save all the congrats for June.
Thank you. Mrs. Pang?
Yeah, I just want to thank Jeff, Michelle for your service. Best luck for the retirement. Also, congratulations to all the kids being recognized tonight. Finally, I have a question for Dr. Alderelli, actually. I know we have, you know, we have said that we're going to install GPS on the buses. Is there any way we could have an update, like which bus would have it? And is there any way we could, like, for the buses that has it, maybe we can put a, you know, a piece of paper or a flyer on the bus so the kids can see maybe a barcode or a QR code that they can, you know, download the app, tell the parents, because otherwise we keep saying...
Right, we're speaking to the digital app for the telephone, right?
Yes, to track the bus.
So, right now, where we are is, I know that it's being beta-tested, right? There's members, and I'm not just talking about members as in staff members, but like members of the community at certain schools that are still beta-testing it. We're having some, a couple hiccups with it still. We're looking actually for more volunteers. I know I've had some additional parents reach out to see if they'd like to, you know, pilot it, so to speak, so we could work out all the kinks. If they want, they can just reach out to my office, and I'll get them in touch with transportation. The only thing that's required is that you're utilizing, you're on a route that has an Edison-owned bus, right? So it can't be one of the vendor's buses because they're not required to utilize this. In any event, that and a cell phone, and we'd be more than willing to get you as part of the pilot program. We hope to wrap this thing up mid-February and then, you know, release it to everyone to use at the end of next month. But when we release it, we want to make sure that, you know, it's working efficiently. And also that if there's a problem and a parent needs to call transportation, that our staff has been fully trained on the software, on the, on our end of it, to be able to troubleshoot, you know, parents' inquiries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mrs. Anjana Patel, will you say something?
Thank you, everyone. Nice to see you, everyone. It seems like I don't know, I'm new here, but congratulations and best luck. And thank you, Mr. Alderelli, for this nice evening. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Lugo?
I know many of these students had already left, but I'd like to congratulate them. And I would, I look forward to seeing more achievements from them, to be honest with you. And I wish them all the really sincere best of luck to their future endeavors. Keep up the great work. And for Mr. Bowden and Ms. Wenzel, congratulations on your retirement, and it's only the beginning of another chapter. And I wish you sincerely the best of luck with your next steps, and cheers to you.
Thank you, Mr. Lugo. Vice President Romano?
Michelle, it seems to me that the oven went bad right before the negotiations. I mean, and then, I don't know, your partner there couldn't even get like a replacement oven right away. I mean, really? Okay, but the next meeting is in February? I'm looking for cookies. Thank you, Michelle. Jeff, thanks for all your help. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. Jeff and Michelle, like I said, I will repeat myself that you guys will be in a better place. So congratulations on your retirement, and we look forward to, you know, seeing, working with you the remaining months. And, you know, really, good luck for the future, but Edison will really miss you. So thank you for everything you did for the township, for the public schools. Really appreciate it. All the students who were recognized, I have said enough, and all those who were not recognized, you will be recognized one day. Keep working hard. And for all EHS students, that's your mentor right there, Mr. Ross, he will keep you motivated every single day, and you'll sure soon be recognized. So thank you so much for everyone being here. One of the things that we saw earlier was the one-page flyer that we are going to put together, which is, which has all the links. So I would like to say huge thanks to Dr. Alderelli and Ms. Heather Daniels. They worked very hard in a matter of few hours to put that together. That's really incredible. So wholeheartedly appreciate all of your hard work. And like I said, it could just get better from here. And I really thank all the, everyone in the parent community who reached out and contributed. One of the parent is sitting here, Mr. Harish, he's sitting here right here, so you are the one who also suggested about it, so thank you so much. And everyone else who provided the input to put together this thing. So we are open to receiving more inputs and making it better for anything that helps the students and the parents. So thank you so much for that. Without any further delay, we'll open it up for public comments. We'll start from the students first here.
Good evening, Edison Board of Education. My name is Shresta Rai. I'm a senior at Chompy Stevens High School, Director General of JP Stevens Model UN, President of our DECA chapter, and Vice President of our JSA chapter. I would like to bring to your attention today the state of our clubs and extracurriculars. Because from the inside looking in, we have, from the outside looking in, we have some of the most prestigious clubs in not only New Jersey, but also North America. Our Model UN team wins delegation awards, awards for the high school at every single national conference we've attended since I joined this in ninth grade. UPenn, Georgetown, Princeton, New York University, all of them. JP's DECA has been awarded the largest chapter in the state of New Jersey, even though we are only two years old. Our Junior State of America chapter, so Mock Congress, has seen more students from JP Stevens hold state and national officer positions, though we do not have an advisor. This list of our accomplishments goes on, all thanks to the hard work of our advisors that are willing to put in the work and the unbelievable drive of our students. Yet, from the inside looking out, it has grown increasingly clear that there is a lack of administrative support in these endeavors. I would like to bring the case of our Model UN team. Since JP reopened after COVID-19, we've been going to the Ivy League Model United Nations Conference hosted by the University of Pennsylvania. Two years ago, even though it was right after a pandemic, we were transported in coach buses, bringing home the best large delegation award. Last year, we didn't have the same luxury. We were shoved in a single yellow bus, sitting elbow to elbow, hoping that the luggage that was piled in the back of the bus wouldn't fall over on us. But still, we brought home the best large delegation award, beating some of the most expensive private schools in the East Coast. This year, forget about transportation, we could not even get a check passed through administration. How is that? You have kids willing to take more shifts at their part-time jobs so that they can pay for these conferences, yet we don't have a principal to sign off on our purchase orders. As students, we tried everything in our power to make this conference happen, following up with our advisors months before the conference, keeping in constant contact with the Il Monk Secretariat, calling the Marriott Hotel to extend their deadlines, talking to alumni of GIPSMUN, contacting our administrators. We went above and beyond, to the point where Il Monk told us they wanted us to go on this trip so badly. They were willing to waive the delegation fee and the hotel fee, over $15,000, as long as we could get confirmation that we would pay them back later. Email after email, we begged for the word, "Yes, we will make it happen," but it never came. Even though as students, we were able to figure out the issues with financing, we aren't administrators. We don't have the power to expedite health screening or attendance protocol. But you do. This one conference is so major to the health of any Model United Nations national team. It's the reason why underclassmen completely transform and break out of their shells. Even our mayor, Sam Joshi, is an alumni of our club and recognized how important it was in shaping his public speaking ability. We won't be going this year. Just 20 minutes ago, I got a text from an EHS student saying that they will also not be going this year. Their trip will also be canceled because their school couldn't pay on time either. With the continuous lack of administrative response and support, the ability to compete in national conferences and bring home awards on behalf of Edison is dwindling. Even for NAMUN, North American Invitational Model United Nations Conference hosted by Georgetown, we can no longer compete even though we won another delegation award two years ago because they only take credit card payments, a payment method too modern for Edison. My goal today is to convince you to do two things. Firstly, I want Edison to talk to the larger New Jersey body and discuss a better way of payment processing. Hotels and conventions will no longer take the outdated purchase orders, invoices, and checks. And so we are losing opportunities to compete because we don't have access to a credit card. Rules at JP Stevens make it impossible for students to navigate around these issues without making some teacher, some advisor, some principal mad at us. Secondly, I want Edison to take our public school extracurriculars more seriously. We bring nothing but prestige to this town, yet we feel so unvalued. All of these awards and yet no recognition at this lovely meeting. Our students should not have to beg already overworked teachers to be our advisors for clubs that are already student-run. Our students should not have to lie to go on trips that do nothing but benefit the reputation of Chompy Stevens and Edison High School. Our students should not have to keep hearing the answer no to everything we try to pass through administration. The reason we, as in JP and Edison High, couldn't get a check through should never be because you guys failed to arrange for administrative employees. I come to you as someone graduating in another six months, so whatever decision you decide today will have little impact on me. However, I truly believe in the legacy that these clubs have, and I hope you do better for my underclassmen, who are wells of untapped potential. I thank you for the time for this lengthy speech, but please understand, I would not have taken your time if it was not in your best interest to support some of the most driven students in the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, and thank you for taking time to come here, Dr. Alderelli.
Yeah, and rather than getting into it back and forth, what I'll do is I'll, we'll touch base right after this meeting. This particular incident was actually brought to my attention last night, unfortunately, mine and Mr. Toth's. We were really unaware of this process. Unfortunately, I think your event is Thursday, and we're kind of at the last minute. But I do have our administration working with this. I tasked an individual with making sure, I think you have one that's coming up in February and in March. And rest assured that there will be no interference in any process moving forward. So I do thank the individual that brought it to my attention because I, you know, listen, I was unaware of it, that there would not have been any process. There was obviously a breakdown there, but we'll touch base after the meeting. And well said. I agree with everything you said.
Thank you. Next, public comments. Ms. Conway?
Thank you, Shresta, for articulating the plight of clubs in JP Stevens. I'm also from the Model UN club. Me and Shresta are actually co-director generals, which means we are both vice presidents of this club. And we can tell you firsthand that there's been a lot of motions these past few days surrounding the canceling of this trip. Given this news just last Thursday, after we had already prepared for the conference, created room assignments, planned out our grocery list, and spent hours deliberating how to create the best opening speeches possible, our hearts dropped to our feet hearing that the conference we had all been waiting for all year was now not possible. But this isn't just about the motions, it's about the facts. And as Shresta was saying, we have not failed in bringing prestige to our school. So now I'd like to enlighten you all about both our individual award rate and our delegation award rate. Over the past three years, our national team has had a 100% delegation award rate. In 2023, we attended the Empire Model United Nations Conference at NYU, where we earned best small delegation and had a 63% award rate. At the Princeton Model United Nations Conference in 2023, we won outstanding large delegation with a 70% individual award rate. At the Ivy League Model United Nations Conference, we won best large delegation for the second year in a row with a 77% individual award rate. Again, at Princeton Model United Nations in 2022, we won outstanding large delegation with a 55% award rate. And the previous year before, we went to the Washington Area Model United Nations Conference, where we won best small delegation with a 57% award rate. Then we went to the North American Invitational Model United Nations Conference, winning outstanding large and an 80% individual award rate. Mind you, this is the most prestigious conference in the entire world with over 3,000 delegates attending from all over the world. Then, again, in 2022, at the Ivy League Model United Nations Conference, we won best large with a 97% award rate. And previously, we went to Empire Model United Nations again with an outstanding large delegation award. However, this data doesn't even do justice to the entire GIPSMUN legacy. As you can find on our website, gipsmun.com, the legacy spans decades, earning us recognition as one of the best public schools in the nation, starting in the early 2010s, which you can find on bestdelegate.com. What this data tells us is that we can do all of this without administrative support, but imagine what we can do with it. As I mentioned earlier, we won outstanding large delegation at Princeton, the number-one university in the nation, their Model UN conference. Despite it being half an hour away, for four days, we as students were forced to arrange our own transportation for a four-day event. This isn't just about getting approval for these trips that give us the prestige and the recognition for all our hard work. It's about actually getting the support we need, the basic support that clubs get all over town. We left at the end of the school day on Thursday, the middle of the school day on Friday, and in the mornings on Saturday and Sunday. We were not even able to get subsidized transportation on Thursday or Friday, forcing parents to take time out of their schedules to bring us to and back from the east Brunswick Hilton. These are parents who work and are happy to help their kids do what they love, but they should not have to take off of work to bring their children to a destination of a school trip. This unfortunately wasn't the first time the administration has let us down. GIPSMUN 28 was canceled last year due to an inability to use the building for one Saturday in the month of May. GIPSMUN 28 is known as one of the best local conferences in New Jersey. And despite applying months in advance, our event was canceled at the last moment, again, like this conference. The only choice was to cancel this event, an event anticipated by delegates from all around New Jersey. We have only been able to hold our flagship conference in December every year due to the benevolence of the local Islamic center, because we were still not able to get school support to holding one at our actual school. Every time we apply for a date to use, we get put down. This forces us to find new locations and dates that not only put us in a tight place as a board, but it gives our delegates less time to prepare and makes it difficult for them to perform their best. It is especially hard to see other clubs able to get the building usage easily while we are fighting for just one day in the year. We are not disregarding that it may be difficult to secure janitorial and security services needed for huge events like GIPSMUN. But if we can get it for events like the JP Jazz Festival, there should be no reason why we can't get it for events like GIPSMUN, which also invites students from all over the state. We are not asking for much. We are asking for support, support other clubs and programs get consistently to continue building the already astounding legacy of JP's Model UN. And although we could, we wish we could ask you to get us to Philadelphia this Thursday, we know that it is simply impossible at this point. However, we still fully intend on going to the remarkable Model UN However, we still fully intend on going to the remarkable Model U N conferences such as Neyman and Georgetown and Cornell Model United Nations this year and all the years to come. Our delegates are more than just leaders, and I promise you, we will not let you down anytime soon in Model U N or the Greater Edison Community. A little support is the least you can do for such an outstanding group of leaders. So please work with us to make these trips and Gypsum 28 happen this year and all the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. You can speak. No? Next, Ms. Conway.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. Were they unbelievable or not? And I have full confidence, Dr. Alderelli, that you and Mr. Toth are going to take care of this. I'll make sure. I'd like to begin with saying congratulations to all the students that were recognized tonight. It shows us time in and time out that our district is definitely a district to be reckoned with. The second thing I'd like to say is congratulations to Dr. Alderelli. He calls you a rock star, but I'll just call you the person that really knows what they're doing. And I appreciate your presentation and I look forward to the future of this district. Mr. Cohen, you had to follow him with your own presentation and you did fabulous yourself. I think it's a phenomenal objective for this district because not every child gets all their needs met, and this is going in a great direction to help them improve in wherever their needs are. So I thank you for that. And lastly, yes, I did get up and I told you to vote no, and none of yous listened to me, but I knew it wouldn't have mattered that you voted no, but I just wanted to make sure that somebody voted no. But as far as Mr. Bowden and Ms. Wenzel, there'll always be Mr. Bowden and Ms. Wenzel to me because my three children had both of them. And whenever we would have a discussion, it was like, which one was it then? And my children are 38, 35, and 31, so they've been around for a while. And I know they don't want to hear the age of my children, but that's how long they've been here to support the students in Edison District. But not only the students, they've also helped many a teacher when they needed someone. If we ever had a question as a former teacher, if we ever had a question, they were always willing and able to help us or at least push us in the right direction. So for that, I thank you both immensely. There's many people in the Edison Township Education Association that have been fabulous, but we're losing two cornerstones. And hopefully, there'll still be a phone call not too long ago, and I actually have their cell phone numbers. So you know, if I have a question, I can still, I don't erase phone numbers after I use them once. So I just wanted to let you know. But I appreciate you and I look forward to where you're going and being on the other side of the table. It does have its pros. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. You had like three minutes and six seconds left, and you forgot to thank all the board members for the School Board Recognition Month. That includes current and former board members, yourself, Ms. Budowski, Mr. Shi, and all those board members who are not present here. So I thought you would say that, but on behalf of you, I'll say that.
I actually come with Ms. Budowski, and the two of us can't talk about the same thing all the time.
Awesome. But that's so productive. That saves us time. So Ms. Budowski, while you're at it, you can go. You gonna say something, Ms. Budowski?
And I did get up and speak at the earlier meeting this month about the Board of Ed and the appreciation of Board of Ed members and how important what they do is to all of our students. I also would like to wish Ms. Wenzel and Mr. Bowden and anyone who is retiring a wonderful retirement. There's so many opportunities, but don't forget the schools and don't forget the students and don't forget to come back because you can do so much more once you're, you know all the things that happened and you're no longer here. But I have to say that without Ms. Wenzel, my family would never have thought about the fact, living in South Jersey, near Philadelphia, in Wilmington, in Washington, D.C., one day someone asked Ms. Wenzel in my daughter's class about whether the delegates to the Constitutional Convention and whatever, whether they commuted back and forth or whether they stayed in Philadelphia while they were there. And I remember my daughter going, "Ma, she told them she didn't know." And it was so funny because I just went, "Oh, no? Really? She didn't know? How about she's trying to get them to think?" And there was always a joke of ours with Philadelphia because in our family, you went to Philadelphia for the afternoon. But to anyone else, it seemed a little different. And Mr. Bowden brought the most wonderful experience into our lives, which is bringing sand back from places all over the world. And we had, my daughter had a friend that we traveled with to different places. And one of the places we were at was we were going to the FCC LA National Leadership Conference just to help them get started and get readying, you know, all get their gowns on, their hair fixed and everything like that. So my husband and my friend took the girls to the beach for that little bit of time. And they had their own learning experience there because all of a sudden, in the middle of looking at the ocean and playing in the ocean, the one in high school said to the other, "Oh, this is the Pacific Ocean." And when I got back from the FCC LA meeting, you know, they were like, "We were at the Pacific Ocean." And I said, "Wow, you flew all the way back just to do that?" And but, you know, everyone, I consider it, wow, you're free. But there's so many memories and so many things that come back to you when you have the life of education and work with so many students and you see all your students as they grow up and get different careers. And my Christmas cards, the photo cards I got, "Oh, yeah, that's the twins. The one's a lawyer and the other one's a doctor." And then you see somebody else and you say, "Oh, look at that, you know, this one did this." And these are the same kids I taught how to spell and write and walk down the hallway. So, you know, it's a time of change and a time of a lot of milestones, and we just keep moving farther and farther ahead. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, public comments? Mr. Shi.
Jerry Shi, Edison. I just want to echo congratulations to all the students who were recognized today. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the coaches, the advisors for all these students. It's the extra effort they put in to get these students there. And the other person these students need to recognize are their parents. You know, all these activities, their chauffeurs, they drove them around. And congratulations to the parents and thanks to parents for willing to put in the time to support your children. I just noticed a couple of things, observations. We had two middle schools that was recognized. There's one student from TJ got recognized. I didn't see any students from Herbert Hoover. I hope that the next recognition, that the building principals will find something that they can recognize the students, Herbert Hoover and TJ. This, one of the JP, Edison High students mentioned that they beat JP Stevens, you know, yesterday for the boys' basketball. Last year, they had a competition here. The JP, the boys' basketball, they have a trophy for the winner. And there was also a ladies' basketball game. There was no trophy. So Mrs. Pan raised that issue at last year. I hope that when the girls play each other, we have a trophy for them as well. I hope that's not too much to ask. And the other thing I'm very surprised to hear the students with the Model U N, that's the issue we had last year. And Dr. Alderelli, I forgot, it was you or Dr. Bragan, we talked about this. They need one day to use a classroom. The JP Stevens, the administration cannot even give them one day. That's not acceptable. We found out late, and last year they had to cancel their trip. I thought the issue was resolved. And very surprised to hear this this week, the same issue is still there, right? I know there's a change in the administrations, but that should not impact the students' activities, right? I don't know when Mr. Riji, I think that's the pronunciation of his name, when was he officially started his interim or acting principal position? But let's, don't forget, they're there to serve the kids. So just a couple, couple things. The JP Stevens students also mentioned that they changed the name of Mr. JPS to something else. I thought their event is in February, and we're gonna leave the auditorium renovation in March. I'm surprised to see this meeting's here. Will we still start working in March? Or the renovation will start in February? That's a question for the administration. So I also have a question for the Board President Bureau. Today is the second meeting in January. So where is the School Board Committee? What is taking so long? Okay. Then I have another question is recently I heard two board members had a meeting with Sam Joshi, and Anthony DiAmroon brought that issue up at the last meeting. So my question to you, Board President, should you be made aware or should the superintendent be made aware of this meeting? And when the meeting is over, should you guys be updated? At least the board leadership and superintendent be updated of the discussion of that, the meeting? And we all know that the council approved $3.7 million bound to fix the Stilton School. And as Mr. Brecher said, that is just to keep that building from not falling apart. And I was very surprised to see that there are board members who are suggesting Sam Joshi to give eight or nine classrooms to our special needs students. That building, $3.7 million, is a subpar, it's just the building not falling apart. You guys should be ashamed of yourself to suggest that, put our students in a subpar building. Last year, this board, when we had the EC program, we're gonna put air conditioning for the building. Which building? We put air conditioning? FDR. Please, put our, you know, special needs students. Don't put them at a lower priority. They should be taken care of, okay? And also, for anyone who suggests to Sam Joshi that he can get eight or 10 classrooms for special needs students for the district, then he can go after the special needs aid in the state to take the money away. You guys are deplorable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next public comments? Ms. Freeman.
Good evening. I would like to say congratulations to all the awardees because I know how students is really working really hard to achieve what they have to. I'd also like to thank Bowden and Michelle for their continued work with teachers that, you know, have problems and stuff in their work along, that they work right along with the board. And I'd also like to invite them to join NJEA Retired. You already a member? Did you get your membership yet? Okay, that means we'll be at luncheons together. Okay, I'm glad. Okay. Okay, good. Thank you. And I hope somebody does something about just getting a bus for them to be taken somewhere to where they need to go because there are prizes. We honor them. So please get them a little bus, even if it's a short bus, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comments? Ms. Ravna.
Good evening, Matt Revnack, Vice President E T A and JP Stevens teacher. First of all, a couple of comments. Number one, ladies, fantastic job as a JP Stevens teacher. I'm very proud when I see our students and the Edison High as well to get up and do such a great presentation. You know, there's been issues with that for years, going back in the day. I'm talking 25 years ago, I ran an academic team and it was an issue getting busing. The only difference was, and I'm surprised Mr. Ramon suggested, I had a bus driver's license. I would drive the kids. I would use actually the tennis bus or the golf bus, but it really shouldn't happen. So hopefully that'll get resolved. Number two is the student recognition. You know, it shows what the great kids we have, going above and beyond outside the classroom and the dedication and commitment of the students. Just appreciate Mr. Shi mentioning the advisors, the coaches, you know, the staff members because it is a lot of time outside the classroom. Again, I know I did it for years. Third one, I want to say, Mr. Cohen, nice job presenting. I know it's your first time here in front of the crowd. I'm sure you had a little nervousness about you. But there is one concern I have, not that it's a concern in terms of bringing in a program, but to all the students out there, don't use that as a crutch to not listen to your teachers in class, okay? It doesn't substitute. We went through that with the pandemic and everybody was saying it doesn't work. I know we've talked about makeup days, doing a virtual, and the state won't allow it at this point. You got a petition or whatever, and I'm in total agreement with that and all my, you know, actually, I'm halfway between Mr. Bowden and Ms. Wenzel in terms of time of service in the district. But, you know, it's a little concerning, and I'm hoping our students don't tune the teacher out in class because, hey, I can go get free tutoring and do it outside of class. Your teachers bring a wealth of knowledge. I personally have had two residential scholars, one that I went to Washington with, and back when the Star Ledger had them, I had a Star Ledger scholar. And the comments that they made was, yeah, about not only the teaching and teaching them how to do it, but what you're gonna use it for, practicality. I'm known for my stories. Mr. Shi's daughter had me, you know, the stories, and I bring my real life into it. You're not gonna get that out of a tutoring service online. You know, I constantly, you know, my students always say, you know, like, do you have a story for this? Or how can we relate this? Where does it come from? What can we use it for? And that's the knowledge your classroom teachers have. So again, like anything else, I tell them, I hold the calculator. This is a tool. It doesn't replace the greatest calculator you have. It's called a brain. Use it. Use this as a supplement. Don't use it instead of doing what you're supposed to do in the classroom. If that happens, I think it's a great thing. And there are other resources, by the way, you know, for my, the more advanced students, AP Calc students go on AP Classroom and they have tutorials and things like that. You know, I know a lot of kids over years, Khan Academy and, you know, things like that. We use in Math Delta Math a lot, which does some of those things as well. So again, they're all great things, but they're supplements. They're tools. They're not replacement of what you're supposed to be doing in the classroom. The final thing I just want to say is, you know, in terms of, actually, three retirees. You know, I've been with Patty Savilevich at JP Stevens. She's 25 years. I'm there a little bit longer. And again, it's always been a pleasure. She's an excellent teacher. I know the kids respect her and like her and what she does. But really about the two people sitting here, and I'm gonna say most of my comments to the retirement dinner. But I just want to mention, I'm not gonna, Ellen Baxter is actually running that, but there will be a retirement dinner for Ms. Wenzel and Mr. Bowden in May, early May. There'll be a saved a date sent out shortly from Ellen Baxter. Basically, Ellen's doing most of the work. I'm helping her out. But, you know, when you get that date, please save it. Hopefully, we'll see everybody there. But, you know, when you get that date, please save it, hopefully, we'll see everybody there. You know, Jeff and I have been like brothers. We've been together, I know him for, what, 30, over 30 years. First, at first, he was first vice president, I was second vice president. We knew each other way before that. And then being his vice president now for 12 years, we've negotiated, I've been on six contracts. I know he has a couple more than I do. We're like brothers, you know? It's not only in terms of our working relationships or the respect I have for him as a teacher. You know, I always call him with the weather because he was a great weatherman. He predicts things better than most of the weathermen on TV. You know, so it's difficult to see like someone like that leave. But it's time, and I knew, he told me it was time, we've talked over the last year or whatever. And Michelle's almost like a sister to me. I have a sister very similar to Michelle, has a couple dogs, et cetera. The difference is, my sister and I still fight. I don't fight with Michelle. So, you know, it's very difficult, two great people. And again, like Mr. Shi said, I appreciate the kind words everybody said on behalf of them because they don't get up and speak like I do. But, you know, it's definitely true what everybody said. You know, his leadership in terms of some tough times here and then through some great times, you know, and brought us through some difficult times. And, you know, being his second in command has been a pleasure. In fact, if I'm honored to be his successor, it's tough shoes to fill, and I know that going forward. Although in many ways, we think the same way. People don't realize, we're on the phone with each other like this morning at 6 o'clock, 6:15 in the morning, and there's been times we're on the phone with each other at 1 or 2 o'clock in the morning. He's always called me a workhorse. If I'm a workhorse, I don't even know what title he has because he goes even, you know, above and beyond as much as I do, if not more. So again, I wish the two of them the best in retirement. And I know they're not going anywhere. I know I can always reach out to them if I need to. And, you know, our working relationship, again, I appreciate what you said, Dr. Alderelli, because it's so true. You know, I think we have a great thing going and hope to continue it.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
Anyone else? Maria?
Maria Orchid, 83 Jefferson. First, I'd like to congratulate all the students that were here today. It's a wonderful accomplishment. I'd like to say thank you to the Board of Ed and all you volunteers. Thank you what you do, current and past. One thing I wanted to say is the Edison Environmental Commission. We meet the third Thursday of every month. Of course, we can't do anything right now in the cold weather, but when the spring comes around, we will have different events. Also, we look forward to seeing the high school students come to attend our meetings. We were thinking about starting a scholarship to a lucky recipient. One other thing I wanted to say, February 10th, the Edison Course is having their Tricky Tray. So looking forward to that event here. I believe it starts at 6:30, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Harish?
So Harish Datineni, 45 McKinley Street. So I had a question for Dr. Alderelli and the school administration regarding the snow days. We all know we had to take two days, even though it wasn't that severe. Not blaming anyone, I understand, we have to work together. If township administration and OEM say something, then obviously, you cannot put people at risk, especially the students, so not blaming anyone. Parents are more curious to know what would happen if we had to take a couple of more school, snow days. It's my understanding that the final graduation date cannot be extended, so it will come from the spring break. So it would be really helpful if you could clarify that in advance because some students and families, they might go on vacation. Some students might plan some courses and all that. Also, a suggestion. In the event, we have to take more snow days going forward in the next one month or so as when this time, it's supposed to be a real winter, unlike last year. Is it possible to do the online classes like we did during COVID era? I understand that was a different phase, and it was not just a national but international emergency, and everything was approved. So exceptions could be passed very easily. If we do it this time, how would it work? It will still not qualify as 183 days in-school learning, so maybe the individual township BOEs have the power to override that, I don't know. So a lot of questions in the community, in parents' minds regarding various possibilities. So it would be great if you could clarify this at an earlier stage. And really looking forward to working with the committee heads of curriculum, policy, and facilities regarding some issues. There was... Yes, I remember that now. So also looking forward to that revised demographic study, the latest and greatest one from a different agency, I believe, this time, which would include the immigration ingress and everything into Edison. So if that is not that confidential, it would be great if you guys could post it on the website. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Alderelli will speak with him afterwards, right?
Yes, absolutely. I'll definitely follow up, especially with, in relationship to the snow days and the criteria for, you know, permitting to go remote on a snow day or an inclement weather day. There's some stipulations in there. I can walk you through it after the meeting, sure.
Thank you. Anyone else saying... Do you want to go again? All right.
I didn't realize how quickly 6 minutes went, so standing over here. So just to continue my, what I was talking about. Last year, when I joined the township liaison committees, that's the first time I joined the township liaison committee in three years, I asked Sam Joshi 3 questions because we are putting the long-term plan, and we're doing the demographic study to guide the strategic plan. 3 questions is whether we should put Stelton School into consideration for our long-term plan. The answer from him was no. And the other question I asked him, will he be collaborating with the school board on the 401 Division Street? That is the property between TJ and Stelton. Now he's fixing the Stelton, and this property fits into two government entities. There should be no apartments being built. And his answer was no. He cannot participate, collaborate with board. And the only thing he might be able to do is maybe pave the park... If we get it and put a parking lot, he might be able to pave it. So I know those things were discussed with Sam Joshi. And the third question I asked him is the property of Towne Agent Coolidge. That time, he said he'll try to get some money in November to buy that property, and now this is February. Just wanted to remind the board, at last year's State of the Township Union address, State of the Township address, Sam Joshi used a word, he's gonna give that property to the school board, which means he will buy it, not ask the school board to chip in. Keep, let's remember what he said, okay? This is another State of Township address coming up again. He's gonna give that property to the school board. So far, none of that, I haven't heard anything about that. I hope whoever talked to him gets some updates, and I hope we can get some updates from the school board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to close public comments.
Motion to close public comment. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.